May I have a motion that we only discuss those items that we went into closed session? Two items, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, consideration of the acquisition or disposition of real property. One item, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel on a contractual matter. One item, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, consideration of candidates for appointments. And one item, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel.
So I've moved.
Okay.
And may I have a roll call, please ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz? Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, and are there any modifications to public session? I don't think there are, so.
No, sir.
We'll start with our public hearing. That is Resolution 2022-31, line of credit appropriation. May I have a staff report for that, please?
Yes, sir. Members of council, we discussed previously the ARS program, acquire, rehabilitate, sell, and have, as I think you all know, purchased lots at the delinquent tax sale in order to make properties available for the construction of new homes. This particular resolution would establish the fact that we are entering into a line of credit with freedom first in the amount of half a million dollars. We have one house that we have started construction on, and a second house that's waiting in the wings until this particular item is adopted. We would draw on the line of credit to pay for the house under construction. Once it's sold, we would pay the line of credit back, and any proceeds beyond that cost would in fact be used to purchase property or to build the next home.
Does council have any questions?
Just one quick question. So the line of credit that we would use, does that pay for just materials? Or does that pay for the contractor and sort of soup to nuts kind of thing? Or how does that work exactly?
The first $43,500 is advanced to us by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So we actually used that as the initial payment on the contract, and then reimbursed the fund for that. Then as the progress on the house occurs, we will draw on whatever those expenses are based upon whatever level of progress has been done. We expect this particular home that we have just started to be finished perhaps as early as September.
Okay.
And then as soon as we have the line of credit officially established, and you'll see you have another item on your agenda that actually, in spite of what the charter and everything says, the bank wanted a resolution indicating that I had the authority to sign.
That sounds like a bank.
And if that's done, we hope tomorrow to close on that line of credit.
Okay.
And then start that second home, because the contractor is eager. We also have a second contractor that we have pre-qualified, who will be doing two homes in the fall.
Okay, great. These are all existing homes that we're rehabilitating, not new construction.
No, these are new, these happen to be new construction.
Okay, I didn't realize we could do that with the ARS funds.
They usually have circumstances where they do rehabilitation. I think we all know what sometimes happens when you rehabilitate homes, that you end up having to find a lot of things that you haven't anticipated. Because we were able to buy several properties through the delinquent tax sale, we actually had cleared properties. And the program does allow you to have new construction as long as you can demonstrate that a home existed on that property at one time.
Okay, great.
Even though the property may be vacant and had been vacant for a period of time, we've gone back and done that documentation. And these are what I would call infill properties, properties in neighborhoods that have not had homes on them for many, many years. I will tell you an interesting tidbit. We've had a couple of people stop the contractor saying that they want to be put on the list to purchase the home. And secondly, we had an individual come and say that he had a piece of property in that same neighborhood that he would be interested in discussing with us about the possibility of our purchasing for another home to be built on that one.
Great.
So we really are very, very pleased with the response. These homes are for first-time home buyers, and they do go through some advanced, what I'll call, training or education about being a homeowner. And we're using the local community action agency to pre-qualify people, and to take them through that training. And then there are additional benefits through the ARS program that provided, that are provided by the Department of, excuse me, not the Department, the Housing Authority at the state level that will buy down closing costs and interest rates.
Great.
So our goal is to create more people living in our town in an affordable home.
And based on the projected costs of these homes that you've looked at, you're comfortable that we're well within the market value when completed?
As well as what the criteria is by the state in terms of what percent of their income can be applied, and what the housing cost can be that they could absorb.
I think, just to make sure it's clear, this is, for lack of a better way of putting it, this is kind of a nonprofit program. Anything that's generated from the sale of this, of one house, is going to be then rolled into the ability to continue to do the next house.
And what we've been able to do, none of this is town money, per se, because we have funds that have been generated over the years as what is called program income from previous community development block grants, where people, we rehabilitated homes, and they had to pay back a certain amount significantly less than what we spent in rehabilitating, but still based upon an ability to pay. We've developed that fund over time, and it's just been sitting. So when the opportunity to potentially buy lots at the delinquent tax sale, we use those funds for those purchases. We've also used those funds for any appraisals or surveys that we have need to have completed on these properties. And so anything that we've done is with those proceeds, and we'll also use those proceeds to pay the interest during the time of the line of credit. We'll repay that particular fund when all of this is done, and we'll apply those monies so that they can be used for a future home. We do anticipate that at some point we will be doing rehabilitation of existing homes. But to get us started on this program, we thought it was kind of better to start with new construction.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. And does anyone want to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing. And then are there any other questions before we? One of you'd like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2022-31 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
We'll move to Resolution 2022-32, line of credit for ARS program. The report, please.
Aye. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. What I have learned in this process is that banking institutions don't understand how government works. They wanted a copy of our bylaws. I told them governments don't have bylaws. We have a charter. We've given them copies of the charter that state very clearly the authority of the town manager, and they believe that because we had a forum that said that Brady Deal was a program manager for ARS, that he was the one that could borrow money and make payments. And I explained to them that wasn't the case. And we went through, I don't know how many different iterations. And finally, I just said, let me just get a resolution from the council that makes it clear that I have the authority. So that's what this is really all about. This is being done exclusively for the bank. And as I said earlier, we've been trying to close on this for several months. And so tomorrow morning, we hope to be able to get these two documents to the bank, close on the loan, and keep moving forward.
Did I just make the one comment that I have had banks require, for small corporations and nonprofits, require a resolution to open a checking account? So it's not just, it's not just the government that the banks don't understand. They just don't understand anything that doesn't fit within their forms.
I had to give them my social security.
Yep.
My driver's license.
Yep.
You're on the hook.
That's, that's to make sure you're not laundering money.
I was waiting for them to ask for my oldest child. They didn't. They know what, they'd have their hands full.
I move that we approve Resolution 2022-32 as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call then, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-33, naming of Sheriff F.R. Connor Drive. And can you give a little info on that?
Members of council, I believe you recall that we had a discussion at your previous meeting of the naming of this short stretch of Lafayette after former Sheriff Connor. Your last meeting was the opportunity for public comment, and we, of course, had none, and I've heard nothing since then. So I would recommend that the council approve the resolution since you have satisfied those requirements for naming, which is a policy that you all adopted about a year, year and a half ago.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-22-33 in naming of Sheriff Ace O'Connor Drive.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And to show you how efficient your staff is.
All right. Very good.
What if they'd have denied that? She would not have showed it to us.
Nope.
Ordinance.
That's one time that I anticipated. Normally do that, but.
Ordinance 2022-11, amending Section 22-33 and adding Section 22-40 to the code of ordinances. If you would explain that, please ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the town attorney can best describe the changes. I went to him and requested that the code be amended to make it clear that there was a penalty for failure to actually obtain a business license. Because in reading of the code, they talked about a late fee and other kinds of things, but really was not specific about the fact that it is unlawful to not obtain a business license if in fact you are in business. And so the two changes that are indicated here clarify that there is a penalty, and then also specifies what those penalties would be. And it is, as you see in Chapter 22, under Business Professional and Occupational Licenses.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-11 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-34, authorizing the insurance and sale of a general obligation and water and sewer revenue bond.
This is the long and waited-for first step in a two-step process that will actually have us issuing bonds as of your next meeting, August the 2nd, for the long-talked-about Brookmont project. We actually, when we received bids a few weeks ago, realized that the bid, along with the architectural and engineering expenses and the absence of a contingency, would have fallen short of the amount that had been previously tentatively approved by the Virginia Resource Authority. We immediately contacted the State Health Department about that shortage, and we have been awarded another $174,000 so that we will have total financing. This latest amount will be principal forgiveness. That's the way they talk about it being, in effect, a grant. Part of the project was already grant-funded. This is, this $2.6 million is the amount of the loan. We will, at your August the 2nd meeting, actually consummate the closing with a number of documents that will be on your agenda at that time. And we gave you in your packet some supporting documentation. The VRA had previously approved the town for this amount and for the loan. But given the amount of time that it's taken us to do this, to get this project to the point of bidding, we had to update our various documents with them, and they will be taking it to their, what they call their committee, on Thursday of this week. But they don't anticipate any issues. You may recall that the Brookmont project originally came about a couple of years before my arrival as a result of a joint consent order that was issued by the Health Department for both the county and the town. And it had to do with the aging of the water, that the water was staying in tanks too long as it was being delivered into the county. So that's why it was a joint consent order. When I came, I asked them to look at the project because it seemed to me that we were spending a lot of money to put facilities in the county when, if we, in fact, constructed the project in a different way and put a much larger tank in the town, that would allow us, as I think Bill has reminded you all, to eliminate several tanks that will speed up the water and that will be able to hold water in this larger tank. We did offer, and I heard last week from the PSA, that they want to increase the height of the tank, and they will pay for that additional cost. And we will, you will be seeing at a future meeting a budget appropriation to actually receive that money from the county, or, excuse me, from the PSA, for that purpose. But this is a project that will have tremendous benefits, not just to the Brookmont community, but to our entire water system. So I certainly recommend approval of this resolution. And as I say, you'll have a number of documents in front of you on August the 2nd that will finally consummate the closing of that loan. We have previously appropriated this amount as well as the grant amount that was awarded as we have been drawing on that to do the design work. But we're very pleased with the bid that we got. The fact that it takes us several years, and the economy has changed a lot in the meantime, doesn't surprise us that it fell short. But we're very pleased that the Health Department was willing to give us additional funding.
One question. What's the difference between a finances agreement and a funding agreement?
Those are documents that the VRA puts together, and I'm not sure that I brought all of them here with me. Oh, yes, I did, okay. The financing agreement speaks specifically to what conditions the town has to meet in order to receive the funding. And then the funding agreement is the actual amount and how it can be drawn down. And the way this funding works, because part of it is what I call grant funding, they call it principal forgiveness, and a large part is the loan. You actually draw down in proportion to each other as you pay bills on the construction. So you don't get to have the benefit of all of the grant money upfront. You actually will spend down till the very last dollar, and you'll be spending part grant money and part loan money at the same time. This was actually anticipated to start being repaid in this fiscal year. Because of the way the VRA financing works, the first payment will actually occur in next fiscal year. But it has been planned, those payments have been planned in our capital improvement budget. So in other words, we've budgeted the debt service for future years for this project.
Now, early on, when this agreement first made, the proposal first made, we were supposed to incur a 1% increase in service to the public for this loan. That's still a part of it?
The interest rate was locked in when.
Not the interest rate. The public would be charged a 1% increase in the water service.
Well, we put into place last year the first of three years of rate increases.
Oh, the separate?
They weren't separated. We just had Brookmont as a project listed for its debt service that was to start, as I said, in this current fiscal year. But because we're not able to award the contract until this year, the way the VRA loans work, you'll make your first payment when the project is completed. So it would be in next fiscal year. So we're actually a little bit better off because we budgeted a year ahead of when we'll actually have to make that payment. But it was anticipated in that increase that we did last year, and that is, you all just approved for this fiscal year. And then there's one more year, because we had a three-year commitment to do that. And depending on how we're able to spend the ARPA money and get some other things in place, we may be able to reduce that increase for the third year. We'll just have to wait and see.
I get you. Thank you.
Ready? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Resolution 2022-34, authorize the insurance sale of the general obligation and water and sewer revenue bond as discussed or as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
All right, if you all would look over June 21st Town Council meeting minutes, and it's for your consideration if one of you'd make a motion to accept them.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve June 21st, 2022 Council meeting minutes.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the council comments. Mr. Penn, do you have any comments today?
No, good, thank you.
All right, Mr. Dawson?
No, sir, not today.
Mr. East?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ratliff?
I do have a couple of things. I want to bring up the tree situation in our town. We're getting some overgrown, I'm getting, actually getting some reports of Franklin Avenue, Winfield Circle, all that. But it's just generally everywhere trees around the, around just from the mayor's shop there, it's hanging over the sidewalk. Is there any way we can? I know our town staff is limited to what they can do. Is there any way that we could get a tree company in here and start identifying before school buses start running? Because some of these roads, like going up Franklin, they're thinking of the trees are, they're actually hanging over pretty good up there.
If you will, and not just you, Mr. Ratliff, but any member of council that knows of a particular area that needs that, if you'll get that information to me, we can certainly look at it. You can solve every problem in the world with money. And we'll have to take a look at what it would cost to get a company in here to do that. I have asked them, just in the last week, to trim back, the tree is on West Main, that we trimmed about a year ago, and everybody complained. And yet they've grown back beautifully. And as we have worked to get some better signage in front of the businesses, and they, there are the hanging signs as opposed to signs on the windows, you can't see the signs because of the trees. But it would be a significant undertaking for us to go town-wide and do that. So if you can identify specific streets or areas of the town that you think need to be addressed, we'll certainly look for a plan. We may end up having to do some of it ourselves, and some of them may be of a height that we can't address, and we'd have to call in a company. But I'm happy to take a look at it.
Some of those overgrown bushes should be the responsibility of the homeowner.
It depends on where the, yes, where the tree is located. You're absolutely right. But if they're in the right-of-way, then obviously, we can cut back when it's on our property. And what you may or may not know is that we have very recently had to have some private property owners cut back bushes and shrubs because of sight distance issues that have presented a safety issue. And what we will do in those cases is advise the property owner that they need to remove it or cut it, reduce the height. And if they don't do it within a specific period of time, we have the authority to go in and do it ourselves just because of it being a safety issue. So if you see that kind of situation, I'd love to hear about that as well.
I have one more, and it's, I think, I think the mayor brought it up here before. You got, you got Route 11 looking really good. They've cleaned, right there at the red light, Route 11, Mooreville Drive, when you take the left off that one bank right there, it really needs just to be cut, everything.
Have you gone in the last couple of days?
I've not, I've not, I've.
It's been cut.
So the one at the red light has too?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can assure you, we.
I'll draw that complaint back and maybe get on maybe some high grass. You might want to look at it.
No, sir. Do not have them.
Thank you. Mr. Reese?
Just had, this is actually, on this topic, it made me think of something that I've been noticing. There's, you know, when there's sidewalks that we have in town, I've noticed that there's some, you know, I've noticed that there's some, you know, people have retaining walls or something like that. And some of them are older and they're starting to old or maybe pieces fall off or something like that. I'm just curious, what's the, who owns the sidewalk? And is that a right-of-way or how does that work as far as?
You're getting into Mr. Ratliff's territory.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, if something, if something's looking like it's going to fall or, you know, if something's blocking this, yeah, or, yeah, or has.
The property that sidewalks are on are generally town-owned property. Although the ordinances that we and other communities have say that it is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to cut the grass to the curb.
I'm not talking about grass, I'm talking about stones and walls and stuff.
But it really depends on whether or not that's in the right-of-way. We have many of those walls throughout the town. And some of them are probably on the right-of-way, although they shouldn't be. They should be part of the private property.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't generally, as a community, install those. They would be something that was done at the time of construction and were needed because of the topography. But if you have a specific area or address of concern, if you'll get it to me, I'll be happy to have the staff look at it and see if we can determine ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I had two things that I forgot that I wanted to bring up and-
As long as the mayor says it's okay.
I was going to say we're going to go backwards.
I just wanted to say just the skate park has been really impressive how much it has gotten used. I have to admit that I was, was not expecting the amount of use that has been seen there and, and seems to be being used in a very appropriate way by a lot of young adults. And it just seems to have a great energy about it. And it's just more so than what I would, you know, say that I expected. And so that is wonderful. And so to go along with that is really exciting to see the bike park, mountain bike park underway.
Big mounds, taller than I am, yes.
But that's exciting and I've had a couple of comments from folks that were pretty excited about seeing that going on. And just the activity of that trail extension corridor is, was, was what outdoor recreation has always been a drawing point for ourselves anyways. The, the activity of those things and the addition of those things is, is just exciting.
Kind of building on those comments, I would tell you that we, just today, have decided to move one of the sets of bleachers that we have on Jackson Park over to the grassy area at the skate park. So that adults, parents can have a place to sit because actually some of them have been sitting on what looks like a skateboard and that's actually a skating feature. It's not really a seat, but it's being used as a seat. And we realize that we need to have some seating there. We're also going to have to put some signage out that says no parking in certain areas. While Thompson Tire has said that we can certainly allow people to park on the gravelled area, we need to kind of encourage people where they can and cannot park. And with the future demolition of the Peak Creek Mercantile building, I'm hoping that we'll have some more parking on the East Main Street side that will help with some of that. But I certainly agree with you. I deliberately go down First Street several times a day and there's lots of activity. And I've started to see some people at the basketball court, usually individuals as opposed to, you know, two or three having a pickup game at this point. But I think that's getting some good use as well. And we do anticipate that the striping that is necessary for that court will occur sometime hopefully this month. The rain has delayed some people in terms of their schedule to get different things done. But I, I would agree that the community, it's one of the few things on Pulaski Talk of the Town that has more positive comments. So that, to me, is real success. And the parents seem to be very appreciative as well as the young people. We are removing the old skate park. Actually sold some of the ramp features on GovDeals. And we will be, you know, removing the bulk of that and putting up a gate so that it is no longer used for that purpose. And that should happen in the next couple of weeks.
And I will also comment, you know, on the persistence of you and the staff in running the Peak Creek Mercantile to ground. I know that wasn't an easy effort.
It's not over yet.
Getting closer, but I know it's been, it's been a long time coming. So it's very timely that we're getting close to bringing that to a final end.
We're also, I'm getting in advance of my time, but we are in the process of having some additional work done on 72 East Main, which is owned technically by the Housing Authority, but trying to put it in a condition for it to be either leased or sold. And that's the building that we removed the rear portion of this year because of its condition. So we're trying to clean up that area so that development continues down Main Street.
A lot of activity on Main Street, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I was just noticing that I drove down to work one day and there was two separate construction sites on West Main and then that other construction site over on Washington. And I said, I was thinking to myself, I can't remember the last time there's been that much, you know, those, that many different projects going on at once.
And they've started the utility work for the townhouses that-
Right, no, that's what I meant, that was the one on Washington, yeah.
Everybody good? Can you have them check? I've been told by residents on 13th Street that there's potholes on both ends, Randolph and Prospect. If you can just check into it and see if that's on the schedule or anything to be fixed. And with the striping, does that mean the striping of the Sixth Street Park will be-
Yes, same contract.
Around the same time, okay. That's all I have. Do you have anything since you've already?
Well, I was going to mention the mountain bike-
We stole everything.
Because we have had some people commenting saying, what are those mounds of dirt? We've already had questions about the kind of bikes that can be on the site. We will be actually constructing a parking area there because we know some people will be coming, actually some distances. We've had people as far away as Roanoke calling, asking what the status of that project is. So we do anticipate there would be an influx. We have received the charging station. So we'll be doing some work on First Street over the next several weeks to actually prepare the site, take the conduit to the site. And then the general, the company that we purchased from will come in and actually do that installation. And we're thinking that's going to also be something that will be of interest not only to residents but to visitors.
Where exactly was that going again?
It's going to be on First Street, the first two parking spaces as you turn from Washington on to First, across from the side of the post office.
How do they pay for the use?
Use a credit card and you, there's a charge, no pun intended, there's a charge for the charge.
Charge for the charge.
And that's, that's pretty typical of that. And we know that while we will need to market its availability, we understand that companies that sell these electric vehicles are very eager to identify additional locations where charging is available. And so we think that's going to bring some more people into our community.
I might add that it was a dead space between Christiansburg to Withville. There is no chargers in between, so this will help, I think.
Lots of balls in the air, lots of things happening. It's a good time to be in the town. It's an exciting time. And I should mention, we've advised the people on East and West Main, but starting August the first, we will be doing parking enforcement of the two-hour parking. We've had enough business activity that people are complaining that they can't find a place to park. And so we will start doing enforcement then.
Which reminds me, that there's a public parking area actually behind the Glenn Building. I don't know that it's, it's, I believe it's a public, a public lot. At least I was told it was, but it's been very, it's kind of in poor shape.
Turn there in the Verizon Building?
Right, yeah, it's next to, in between the Verizon and the Glenn Building. So I don't know if that's something we had looked at as possibly additional parking.
Okay.
I'm not sure where the lines are there, but I would-
We'll take a look at it.
There's a sign, you said, public?
Yeah, I think there is one, yeah.
It's pretty rough, I, it needs some work.
That would be good to put in the paper when they're going to do that enforcement, not the-
Yeah, we'll put that in. We also have, if you read the newspaper, you know that we've put out for bid the striping of our streets that were paved some months ago. And that will also involve a striping, restriping of the parking lot that we've just recently leased from the county as well as our lot that's at the corner of West Main and Jefferson. We're going to hold off on any lighting, additional lighting until we really get into the West Main Waterline project because we'll be redoing the sidewalks and curb and gutter and the lights. And so we want to try to have a decision that would continue throughout all of those different areas. So that'll be something that is coming up. And I will tell you that we have the report on the traffic study. Somebody asked about that the last time. And the two-way traffic issue. And I was going to have the young lady come to your August 2nd meeting and give that report. But given what we have already scheduled for that day, that's now being scheduled for the 16th of August. But I will be sending that report out to you all in advance to read because I'd like to move very quickly on some of the recommendations once we go through that report, if the council is agreeable to those changes. We have the bids back on the Hardy Project. Like everything else, recently it's come in over the amount that we have allocated. We're in the process of talking with the EDA about getting additional funding from them. And we have made a request of James Hardy for additional funding. So hopefully we will resolve that one very quickly. And we anticipate putting out for bid the West Main Waterline in the next 30 days. So there'll be lots of activity, lots of opportunity for you all to see some plans of different things that are, are going on.
What was the timeframe on the Main Street, the sidewalks?
Well, the first thing we have to do is put the water line in and we'll be tearing up the sidewalks to actually add the laterals that'll go to the different buildings. And as soon as that's done, we have the money waiting in the wings from VDOT to actually do the paving of the road as well as curb gutter and sidewalk. So I would say it's going to be next spring.
Is there, is there any design, and I, we may have addressed this, but I know it's just been a while. Is there any design, I mean, the, the way that's going to be reinstalled, is it going to be this as-is or are there going to be design changes to Main Street? Or has that not been decided?
One of the things that we need to have you all decide is the issue of keeping it one way or making it two-way. And once that decision is made, then we can kind of look at design because part of what you would have to consider is the parking and what style of parking you would have, whether you continue to have the current style or the angle parking as some people have suggested. But we don't have any preconceived notions, don't believe that it should necessarily go back the way it is. So we want to look at-
I'm just at it at this point. Okay, well, that's good.
And I guess this brings me to my last comment and suggestion. And that is that I can't find anything in the code that suggests that you have two different kinds of meetings in a month. As I came in the door, your first meeting started at seven o'clock and you had a pledge of allegiance and invocation and you allowed public comment. And then the second meeting of the month, for some reason, started at 6:30 and did not have those other features. So there was no opportunity for public comment. And we didn't do what I think are some significant practices, the allegiance and the invocation. And it was billed to me and has been billed as a work session. And unfortunately, I haven't operated that way. Your meetings have tended to have action items on every agenda and I don't anticipate that slowing down for a while. So I would like to suggest that you all consider having the same time for your meetings, twice a month, and that they include the opportunity for public comment as well as the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. And there is nothing in the code that says that your meeting has to start at seven or 6:30. It could start at 10 o'clock at night if you wanted. It could start at nine o'clock in the morning. The gentleman that sits to my side would like for you to start at six o'clock because he goes to bed early.
Or five.
But I do think that it's confusing to the citizenry too, you know, as to the format. And I honestly don't see that it has made much difference in the way we operate. So I would suggest that you all consider that.
What happened there was Mayor Wade did away with committees. And then he said, let's have one meeting where it's legislative session and his second meeting would be a workshop. And now, for what I know, the both meetings were seven o'clock. It would never, six, I don't know where that came from.
Well, you have just demonstrated, Lane, the kind of institutional memory that you have. I think it's going to be sorely missed when you go off council.
I'm sorry.
In fact, I thought it was five o'clock. Didn't we, didn't we used to have the work sessions start at five and then the others start at seven? And at 6:30 was where we started, when we started doing the closed sessions before the meetings, we started importing some 30 minutes.
Closed session was always after the meeting, in the past.
Right, and that was that way when I first came.
Right.
And some of you all look very tired and eager to go home. And so I switched it on you. And if you would prefer to go back to having that in the evening, I'm fine with that. I just think it's time for us to think about having a regular kind of setup for the meetings. The code just says you have to have one meeting a month.
So what action would be required, any, would there be any action from council?
So if you all want to consider that and maybe, you know, at another meeting, we can decide something different, but I do think it is confusing.
I don't, I don't, man, whatever I was doing is fine, but I think you have to be consistent.
And I think that would be helpful to the public.
I think you can't start too early to make sure that the majority of public has access to it. I mean, so you kind of-
I agree, I have, you know, I have to look at my package every week and say, what time is the meeting this?
Most of us-
That may be a statement about me.
You've got Olivia sitting here who's very young. She probably wants to get out of here and, you know, so, you know, you've got to be careful. I know it's Mambo looking for.
Well, do you all have a preference? Do you, do you like the idea of having consistent times regardless of what it is? So we can make the second meeting in the future, the same start time, official start time as you have for the first meeting of the month?
I, I agree that the meeting should start at, if we're going to do 6:30 or seven or whatever we end up doing, it should be the same, both meetings. Because it is confusing and I, I agree about the public hearing issue too because I had to explain that to somebody one time and they were like, wait, what? And it was just, it's just confu-, I mean, I, I appreciate why, the historical reason why, but it's, it's confusing for the public. If you're going to have a meeting where you're going to vote on stuff, then people should be able to comment on stuff.
Now, they can clearly sign up to speak on an agenda item.
Right.
Regardless of which kind of meeting you have. But to just come to a meeting and comment on a non-agenda item, we-
Yeah.
Under your current format, we don't allow. And to have to explain to somebody, well, you can't come until August, you know, because the second meeting, and we skipped a meeting the first of July, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
I mean, we have questioned that in the past. We're, you know, we're, we're here to represent the public and they should be able to speak whenever, you know, there should be a time allotted for, for that. So I would, I would agree. I like the closed session prior and five or 5:30, uniform start, I think, works.
I think it also makes sense if, if you're going to treat them the same and invite, you know, the public, you know, the same, then, then follow in the same format with the, with the pledge and invocation and both meetings would be appropriate.
Actually, I get confused with it after doing it with you all for two years. I still have to stop and think and I say to Olivia now, and I used to say to Dave, now is this the one that we don't have? These things where I'll write them down. As I was doing the clerk job for a while, you know, I'd have it the wrong meeting, you know, because I'm just so used to public meetings starting with an invocation and a pledge. You know, that it seems to me to lose that is a little bit different. Okay, so I, what I hear is that you're fine with having the same schedule and the same format of what we would do at the meetings. Do you want to go and be so bold as to name a time that you all would want that to be?
What about 6:48?
Seven o'clock is fine, I mean.
Seven?
I don't know, I said seven.
I have no answer.
Whatever time's on that paper, I'll be here, it don't matter.
You come an hour early anyway.
And then we can still change the, the closed session pattern because we come in, because people don't have to be here until the real one.
And I really tried to judge that based upon what I anticipate we're going to have to deal with. But Spencer will tell you that we take whatever amount of time we have, regardless of-
We'll make sure it fits, I love it.
I do believe that, yes. I believe that if we had closed session at five and started a meeting at 5:30, then we'd get closed session done in 30 minutes.
we'd get closed session done in 30 minutes. We'd give it an hour and a half.
And if we've got the same amount of stuff, we would make it go to seven if we need to.
Well, and there was one time, I know, that, um, we had enough that we ended up having a closed session at the end of the meeting if we weren't able to finish everything, um, in whatever time you would allow. And if you wanna decide, you know, that, for example, you want every meeting to be 5:30 to seven with the understanding that if there is something that carries us over, that we could, you know, finish it at the end of the meeting, you know, I'm fine with whatever you want. I just am more interested in having some consistency.
I think five, I think I'm fine with 5:30 to seven and then the main meeting starts at seven.
Does that work with everybody's schedule?
Yeah.
Just plan the main meetings at seven and then, then we can figure out the other stuff.
As a citizen to every meeting.
But he can still tell us what happened in the past.
Well, that's why I'm saying, so we need that institutional memory there.
I happen to do it.
Okay, so we're gonna, with the month of August, uh, we will start with both meetings starting at seven and a 5:30 closed session if needed, and we can modify that, make it shorter. We have to and hopefully not longer. Um, and the format would include the pledge of allegiance, the invocation and the opportunity for public comment. Are you okay with it? All right, well, that's my report.
All right, with that, uh, just a reminder that our next meeting will be August 2nd, 2022, closed session starting whenever we think it needs to. Um, and open session starts at seven. As there's nothing else on my agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.